All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please.
You're aggressive, girl.
Yes. All right. Welcome, everyone. If you'd like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Betty, did you get that? I think everyone's here but Kathy and Marissa. Okay, thank you. I'll read the board norms. Debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important, and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and their schools, not politics. Assume best intentions in all discussions. Welcome back, everyone. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Sound moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to entertain a motion to pull out the personnel memo from the consent agenda.
What is that?
We have a correction to make in it, that's all.
Sound moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. I'd like to now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda without the personnel memo.
Sound moved.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, and now we will discuss the personnel memo.
Yeah, we're just, if we could remove under the right page, we're going to remove Lucas Billings from the appointments section.
And so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Personnel Memo 656 with the correction of removing Lucas Billings.
Sound moved.
Second.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right. Good, thank you, everyone. I didn't see any public input, but I don't know if we had a list back there. Is anybody here for public input? No. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, again, welcome back, everyone. I think the first up is the Student Representatives Report. Thanks for being here, both of you. Thanks.
RIS was all the buzz this summer. The fire systems were a huge undertaking in our old building. The new system will be able to pinpoint a location when an alarm goes off. The new alarm will also have a calm new voice. RIS has a new state-of-the-art projector and large display screen in its auditorium, making the space even more impressive. Through all the work, our custodians Lisa, Jake, Greg, and Zach kept on top of all the cleaning and moving that needed to be done to maintain our building, help our teachers, and prepare for our students. It is the time of the year when our families have more homework than our students. Please be on the lookout for our handbook and accompanying forms, and reach out to your child's teacher with any questions you may have. If you haven't done so, like us on Facebook for continued updates and announcements. Please also consider joining our PTO in supporting all the wonderful events that take place throughout the year. We're looking forward to a successful, joy-filled year ahead, working in partnership with our families. After a summer of building upgrades, extended school year programming, and summer tapestry and tutoring, Northeast is ready for the year. Our library is looking refreshed and bright, and we are eager to spend time in our completed outdoor classroom. Our school team is wrapping up a great week of professional in-service, and the team is looking forward to welcoming students tomorrow. We spent time working with trainers from Suffolk University's Restorative Justice Center and learned how to strengthen our community-building practices. We are excited to welcome the newest members of our learning community, the Class of 2037. Kindergarten is an exciting time for students and families, and we look forward to welcoming them. The first week of school means there's lots of paperwork regarding the family handbook, school home compact, letters from your child's teacher, busing, and calendars. Be sure to connect with your child's teacher via seesaw and follow us on Facebook. Our first PTO meeting will be held in person at Northeast on Tuesday, September 3rd at 6:00 p.m. We hope to see you there. Thanks to all members of our school community for their effort to prepare for students this fall. From waxing floors to making phone calls, welcoming families to kinder camp, and preparing classrooms for students, we couldn't do it without every member of our building. It has been a busy summer at Northwest Primary School, with our tapestry program and lots of children filling the rooms. Northwest would like to thank custodians Mark and Heather. The building is one for the books. They have cleaned every space, and we appreciate their dedication to the Rutland community. There is a wealth of information that will be shared with families at the start of the year. Please be sure to read through the materials and ask questions. We highly encourage you to call the school if any questions arise. Currently, we have forty-seven new students joining our three kindergarten classrooms. It is a scary time primarily for families sending them off to school. We are here to make sure they have a smooth transition and develop a love for learning. We had kindergarten students join us on Monday and tonight for the kinder camp. The RCPS Learning Lounge will be back on PEG TV this school year. Our first episode will be getting to know the new administration in the district. Please check out our segments at pegtv.com or our local television.
From Stafford Technical Center, it says, "The building was a hub of activity this summer between contractors making improvements throughout the school and summer camps for preschool and middle school students. Special thanks to the maintenance crew and our building custodians for all of their attention to detail as they worked around contractors and camps all summer. Faculty and staff are settling in for a great year and are excited to share their spaces with our students." RMS staff celebrated this morning with a home-cooked breakfast on our front steps. It was a time to catch up and regroup before our students return. Our staff continues to be fun, high-energy, and student-focused. They came into the new year with great ideas to promote student engagement and project-based learning and can't wait to put them into action. Seventh-grade students start their RMS career with a full day of orientation to support them in this transition. Eighth graders will join us the following day. We have assemblies to review school-wide expectations, advisories full of growth mindset curriculum, pep rallies, and finally, a lake day at St. Catherine. Our lake day is focused on team-building and creating a sense of belonging and pride in our middle school community. We're excited for another great year. Thank you to the board and Longfellow staff for all your current support." And then, from RHS, "Around High School welcomed athletes back to school with the Fall Athletics Meeting held in the gym. Practices have begun for our class country, field hockey, football, and soccer teams. Our first home game is this Friday at four o'clock, when field hockey takes on Windsor, and then on Saturday, when the boys' soccer team plays Middlebury at eleven o'clock."
Great, thank you. Amelia, you're welcome, by the way. Thanks for being here. Good. All right, next we have the opening of school report. Maybe we'll start with Stafford? Or, you know.
Way in the back.
Sorry, Melissa.
So, thank you. Melissa Connor, Director at Stafford. Tomorrow will be the 50th first day for Stafford Technical Center. So, we are going to be welcoming students from ten different high schools this year. The first three days, students will spend completely in their programs, so that they can start building community within their programs, which helps throughout the entire school year. As a school, our instructional staff is taking a graduate class together, so we spent the first two days of our professional development with our professor Cheryl McDonough, looking at intentional ways to integrate rigorous and relevant and engaging writing activities within all of our technical programs, with the hope of creating a culture of engaged writers throughout Stafford. So that's one of our goals this year. And then finally, our back-to-school night is going to be held on Thursday, September 19th from 6:00 to 8:00. So we'll start out in the RHS Theater, then families will move to the program areas, concluding with a barbecue from 7:00 to 8:00, and we welcome you all to join us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa, why don't you pick who's next?
I think Greg picked one, too.
Yeah.
Sure. The middle school, as you heard, is off to a great start. We are also taking a class. We are taking the Universal Design for Learning through Harvard. It's an online module, so all of our staff will be taking that together throughout the school day to learn how to provide more tier-one instruction to our students in the classroom. We are really excited about some new programs that we've started. One is the CLIME Program, which is a therapeutic approach/alternative to school suspensions, where students get to focus a lot on the behavior or choices that led them to that suspension. We have started a FAR OUT program. Love all of these touch-free videos. That program allows our math and our ELA teachers to do cross-house targeted leveled intervention for our students, hoping to focus more with them at the curriculum grade level that they're at, to support them in growing their skills. We're using a new hall pass monitoring program to increase accountability for time in and out of the classroom for our students. We've had a huge amount of updates to the grounds of the middle school. We have the new outdoor patio. If you have not stopped by to see it, it's stunning. Take a minute and check it out. Furniture is on its way. We have three classrooms that had brand-new floors put in, two classrooms upstairs, and our Bridges Room downstairs. Once in a while, in the great depths of winter, our Bridges Room would become a little stagnant and melodious. We're really hoping these floors help pave the way. We have done some pretty significant updates to our library and our main office. We have bright new colors, trying to make it vibrant and loud to match our kids, and that welcoming feel. We have our open house. It's a barbecue and kickball open house on September 17th from 5:30 to 7:00.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. The Rutland High School, we were pleased to welcome the teachers back on Wednesday of last week. It is our tradition to share pictures of our summer adventures, so that's always a highlight of the in-service, to talk about what we've been doing during our vacation time with family and friends. On Friday, the high school, the middle school, and Allen Street staff participated in professional development together, focused on proficiency-based grading practices. Our focus in that work is really to try to foster the work that's been done already, but also to foster greater alignment between all of the student experiences, grades seven through twelve, no matter what campus they're on. With that in mind, on Monday, grade seven, twelve teachers also met as departments together, actually at the middle school. Topics included advisory practices, formative assessments, and grade eight and nine standards to ensure a smooth transition for students who are moving from the middle school to the high school. Also included in the in-service days were final discussions regarding our electronic devices procedures, which you may have read about in the newspaper today. Discussions in ensuring that our implementation is smooth and consistent, the alternative of which would certainly be melodorous, but we're excited to welcome the freshmen tomorrow, and we are really prepared to see them and welcome them tomorrow. Full student body returns on Thursday, the day after tomorrow, and our open house is next week, Thursday, September 5th.
Six.
I'll go with six.
All right. Great, thank you both. Thank you. Greg, you want to pick who's next?
In addition to that, I just wanted to say that RIS had five fantastic days of in-service, but two days in particular I wanted to highlight. One was last Friday, when we had teachers presenting to other teachers. As a result of the great opportunity that was given to eleven RIS teachers at the end of last school year, eleven teachers and two administrators, myself included, went to the Innovative Schools Conference in Nashville, Tennessee, where it was just incredible conference where students or teachers got really excited about what they were learning. And they did presentations on Friday to all the rest of the staff, individual, there were rotations. It was so well-received. They did such a fabulous job. They actually would come and present to any of you if you wanted. It was just a great day of learning, and having teachers doing that, leading the way, is just a great, it's the key to making change happen, coming from them. So it really sparked everyone. They were excited. We learned about AI. We learned about combating girl drama, self-regulation strategies, strategies to increase engagement, overcoming anxiety and learning obstacles, and a host of other things. And continuing on with that, we have a Google Classroom. We've put different resources in that for everyone, so a lot of enthusiasm. And then, the other day would be yesterday. One of our focuses is really to increase family engagement at the intermediate school. You know, we're a pretty large school for the district, and we unfortunately don't always get a lot of family participation. That was not the case last night at our barbecue. We served so many hamburgers and hot dogs, had over three hundred and fifty people as our best kind of guest. And it was, you know, we had staff dancing with other staff, with students. We had families engaging with one another. We had, you know, students just playing. It was just really a great way to kick off the school year, and just thinking that if this is how we start and we can continue this, it's just going to be a fantastic year at RIS. Our open house is the 12th of September, and we will be serving ice cream for all, so you're all welcome to come.
Great. Thank you.
Did you say time, Carrie?
The first, we do it in three different chunks. The first one is 5:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Thanks, Travis Stack. Christie Kaludi, the principal at Northwest Primary School.
Justine Rowland, principal at Northeast Primary School.
It's hard going last. They took a lot of our things.
Well, second to last.
Second to last.
Scott Corbett, Melissa.
Yeah, we still have Scott. We still have Scott to go.
Take some of Scott stuff. First of all, I'd like to thank our building custodians. I know Amaya mentioned it, but I think it's really, really important. Our building is amazing, so thank you to Mark Burkowski and Heather McMahon for doing the work they did. And also, thank you to Glenn and his crew. We have been doing a bunch of things on the playground, so across the district, I think this is true, that they've been really working hard around, you know, the heat, the rain, everything else, but our buildings and grounds are really top-notch, and we're very lucky to have them. And one thing at Northwest and Northeast, we had kinder camp the last couple of nights, so we have our new faces coming into the building. Tonight for our group, we got to take a tour of the city on the bus.
Because did we?
We were upset to let the kids go by themselves. You know, it was optional, but most kids wanted to go by themselves. I don't know if you guys saw that. So we were really lucky to have them start with us.
Yeah, last night we had Make It Take It Craft Night, so at Northeast, we had about fifteen families. It was just a great opportunity for families to come into the school and make those connections with other kindergarten families, and then get to know some of the team. I just want to share a little bit about our in-service at Northeast. We had great in-service. We worked with Suffolk University, who they are the creators of the Circle Forward Framework, which is proactive circle building, community building, at the very first level. And so we did a full two-day training as a staff, two groups of twenty, and it was equally important for our staff to build those relationships and to have that team-building experience, so that they can model that for their classrooms. So this year, just like RIS and Northwest, Northeast will be engaging in circle practice every morning from 9:00 to 9:30 as a whole school, every classroom starting their day in a classroom circle. That's the first layer of restorative practices, is to build and establish a strong community culture that's built on the foundation of belonging, and you can't have restorative practices if you don't have a relationship to come back to. So that's what our staff's working on. Great kinder camp, and we're looking forward to welcoming our new kindergarteners tomorrow, Class of 2037. That's kind of crazy to think about. Yeah, and our open house at Northeast is on Wednesday, September 18th. Just like RIS, we do it in three waves, too, so we start at 6:00 p.m.
At Northwest, open house is also on the 5:30 to 7:00. We start, everybody starts in the gymnasium, do a little presentation, so you're welcome to join.
So you said that was the 18?
Yes, it's a Wednesday. For our in-service, our staff focused on literacy and social-emotional learning. So we are partnering with a group called Partners in Literacy and Learning, and we're really outlining our curriculum at the primary level. And for our social-emotional, we're super excited. We're starting something called Ready Body, Learn Minds, and it's with collaboration from our PT and our OT. It's just really about de-escalating and regulating your body to be a learner. And all classroom teachers, we offered this as a pilot program, just to kind of feel it out, and all classroom teachers have accepted the challenge, so students will be going down to a movement lab that we've created in the school, a minimum of three times a week for fifteen minutes, just to get on track. It's very structured, so if you're at Northwest, you'll have to check out our new movement lab. It's a pretty neat space, and I think the kids will be super excited. Tomorrow will be, you know, kicking off the day. If anybody's around, you want to stop by and see a bunch of happy students? They are so happy to be back, and we'll have a little guest appearance with a dancing star.
Are you a star?
I'm not.
Great. Thank you both. Good.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Scott from Allen Street Campus. As we approach the open of Allen Street Campus for 2024 school year, I'm pleased to report our extended school year was super-successful. I've never seen such changes in students in two weeks. Quite admirable. Our dedicated staff has been hard at work throughout the summer, preparing for a smooth transition. Bob has cleaned the school, and it's completely shining. We're looking forward to several exciting initiatives, including painting a mural with a resident artist, raising our Hyde Tunnel, continuing our skate program with Chill, and collaborating with Rutland 350, hopefully planting two pollinator gardens on campus. In addition, we're excited to host back-to-school Open House Cookout on September 26th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., which promises a great opportunity for community engagement. Our team is well-prepared and eager to welcome students back, and we can't wait to see their smiling faces. Thank you for your ongoing support. Appreciate it.
Great. Thanks, Scott. Does anybody else go?
I think that's it. Everybody, everybody.
Okay, all right, great. All right, thank you. Those were really nice to hear, all the fun things that are happening before we open school.
Yeah.
Belle, I think you're up next.
Next. One of the things I was thinking about, we, is Glenn Scott back there? Glenn Scott's back there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Glenn and I were talking about the possibility of taking you all on a bus tour of the district, just to see some of the physical improvements that have happened. That was mentioned a lot at the table.
I really just sent him a text and said, can I do a walk?
That'd be so fun.
It would be fun, yeah. So we just have to work on how we schedule that. And there's a lot to see, and it would be hard to make it through all those buildings. We wouldn't have to do everything, but Christie and Jess Henderson brought me to some spaces over at Northeast and PPLC today that I hadn't even seen, and they're amazing. So we'd love for you to be able to see that stuff. The ESSER work that was done, you can see, you know, I don't know, you may or may not have been in the buildings, but even the floor looks great, you know, the changes that we made. Glenn has a lot of great machines, air machines that are out there. We can get up on the roof, and we take a look at, can we get on the roof, Glenn? Maybe not. Maybe not the roof. But there's some good stuff to see, and you can see how those investments were made, and be a little bit more real to you. So if we could figure that out, we'll do that.
Can we have a comedy tour?
Comedy tour, yeah.
Comedy tour with it? Like a?
Put a narrator on the front with a microphone, like talking.
You and Glenn can take turns.
It's like those tour guides that are going on a bus tour. A lot of pressure on Glenn right now. So I just, yeah, I wanted to say as well, welcome back to our families and to our kids. It's really fun to have all the adults back in the building over the last five days. It makes it so much more lively, and it's good to see our colleagues and friends. And then when the kids come back tomorrow, really, if you have the chance to come to a school and to see the kids coming in, even these guys, aren't you excited to come in Thursday? Well, they're really excited. They're excited when they're young, for sure. They're excited, they're trying not to show it.
They're cool.
That's right. So we're just glad to have everybody back, and we're looking forward to working with our families and our kids again. It's, I, RIS, I didn't realize that cookout was going on last night, and I drove by RIS on my way home last night. It was around six o'clock or so, and there were a million cars there, like, what's going on? And I saw this smoke billowing out. What is happening? And then I realized, I missed a cookout, so. We, everybody mentioned in-service, and I think Bianca might be talking about a little bit more about summer professional development and the in-service work that we did. We'll talk about that next week, next board meeting. We had, I just wanted to mention that we had our district-wide opening yesterday morning, and our focus for that was the portrait of a graduate and the strategic plan, and how we're going to implement that. We've been working, I don't want, I'm not going to take any ear thunder, so she's going to talk about that in a few minutes, but so that's all I'll say about that. And then we, some of us went around to buildings yesterday and today to try to talk about those topics with small groups of teachers as well, and really think about, how are we going to, we've done all this work, all this visioning work, so now let's start implementing it. So that was a lot of the work we did over the past couple of days. I wanted to give you a hiring update. We've, we're in a pretty good spot. We, we have many, many qualified people, really, really good candidates coming in to work with our kids, but we do have some openings left, and we're not completely surprised, because, you know, we're in this tough job market, and there are, some positions are more difficult to fill than others.
What are the open positions?
I'll do that right now. So we have, in, at RHS, we have a math opening and a science opening. And so we, we'll manage to cover all of these, these openings. We're going to work through it. For instance, we cover that with teachers taking on extra loads, and they get paid extra. So math opening, science opening at RHS. At RMS, we have a Spanish opening and a math intervention, so we're going to keep those open and look to see if we can fill it over time. And at Northwest, we have a counseling opening. So that's it, other than, and then we, we also had a meeting last, boy, the days are floating by me. It was last week. We had our new staff orientation, and we had, I think, twenty-eight new people that are coming into the buildings in different capacities, paraeducators, teachers, custodians, et cetera. And we had a really nice meeting. It was great to see all these new brains that are going to help us serve our kids, and a lot of enthusiasm for working in the district. We have a good reputation, so I'm looking forward to working with some new folks, and that was, that was a good start for them. I neglected to mention that we still have nine paraeducator openings, and that's not completely unusual, especially over the last bunch of years. So I'll say to the public, looking at the TV there, right there, you know, we, if you have an interest in working with great kids, in a really supportive setting, and really good benefits, it's a great job if you have, if it fits your skill set and personality. It's a really good job to be working as a para. So give us a call, or if you want to talk about it, we'll tell you what it's all about.
What are the requirements for a para?
So you have to, there's a certain level of education we're looking for, but there's also a test you can take to show that you have, you meet that level, too, right? So we do it that way. And, you know, so at least a high school diploma, but then we're looking for more. You know, a lot of, a lot of people have a couple of years of college, at least.
I've stated Vermont requires an associate's degree or is equivalent, so for folks who don't have an associate's degree, we do have coursework and an assessment that they can make.
Thank you.
So that's the way to solve that. But it really, I look at some of the, some of the kids they get to work with, and I think that really looks like fun.
And those openings are across the board, so some might be at the high school or middle school.
All around, right, Pam?
We have a couple that are full. The middle school currently doesn't have any vacancies, but we have one or two in different buildings. We're down to just three openings at one time, and then just give them folks moving in, moving out, parents leaving, some responses. I was so excited.
But it really, I, I, I look at some of the, some of the kids they get to work with, and I think that, that really looks like fun.
And those openings are across the board, so some might be at the high school or middle school.
All around, right, Pam?
We have a couple that are full. The middle school currently doesn't have any vacancies, but put in that mid one or two in different buildings. We're down to just three openings at one time. And then just give them folks moving in, moving out, parents leaving, some responses.
Right.
I was so excited.
Spread the word, Karen, spread the word. I also wanted to recognize a long-term Rutland High School, a social studies teacher, Ron Iseman. You might have seen over the summer. Ron is, was named by the Gilder Lehrmann, what do they call it, Institute for, for American History. They're a national organization, and they give an award to every state across the country every year for the social studies teacher of the year. And Ron was named social studies teacher of the year for Vermont. I don't know if you know Ron. Ron is this guy who absolutely loves history. He, he is a, a real lifetime learner. Every summer, he's got something fascinating going on. As a former social studies teacher, I think, wow, Ron, how does he get to do all these things? I mean, he's, he's, he's been everywhere, and it's all associated with history topics. And so Ron also has been faculty advisor for our mock trial group in speech and debate. And those, those, those kids get great skill work. Maya, you're in it, right? Yeah, I saw your picture in, in the group of people. But the work that you guys do in there is, is so tied to Portrait of a Graduate. It's really, really high-level stuff. And so that's another way that Ron contributes to the, to the district. So I wanted to congratulate Ron for, that's a, that's a really nice award.
Nice.
That's incredible. Last, I, I hesitate to say this, but I, I'm going to retire at the end of the school year. I want to announce that to the community. Brian says no? All right, never mind, never mind.
I disagree.
So I, I wanted to announce that now because I, I want to make sure the board has plenty of time to, to do a really good process and find a great superintendent for the, for the next step. And I know you're going to speak about possibilities for that at the end of this meeting. So I have a long way to go. It's still, we still have a whole year left, and I don't want to step on first day of school, but I wanted to make sure I, I announce that now, so, so we, we can start the process. And I just wanted to say, it's been, I, I find it an amazing privilege to be able to work in this district. I've, I've been here since nineteen ninety-nine in a lot of different capacities, and every job's been extremely fulfilling. I'm very fortunate to have worked here. I appreciate the, the work of the board and all you do, especially in this job that I have now. I'm amazed at how much dedication board members have to, to serving our community. I love working with the colleagues that we have. We have, we have great staff, and they're really inspiring to work with. And I love working with the kids and, and the families. So I just wanted to say thanks for the opportunity that the community and the board has given me to have, have these jobs. And I will help in any way you want me to help as we go through the process. And we'll, we'll still be working, we, Bianca's going to talk about again. We're going to be working on our plan over the next year, and we'll, we'll try to make sure that's ready, you know, implemented and getting, getting going. And then we'll pass the baton to the next person, and they'll keep it going as well. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to have these positions.
Bill, I think you assume that I'm speaking for the board, but please correct me if I am wrong. I don't think we, we could express our gratitude enough for the work that you do on behalf of our kids, for this community soapbox. Public education is the cornerstone of any community, and to have a leader such as you in charge of that cornerstone is incredibly important and incredibly just a wonderful thing for our kids. So thank you for all that you've done. It's an incredible loss for us, but I would imagine you deserve it, the opportunity to retire, spend some time. So I, you know, I'm assuming I speak for all of us when I say what I said.
Second in here.
Approved.
Great, okay. Bianca, you're up.
Yeah, that's a hard pick. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Bianca.
Assistant Superintendent. And I'm going to be giving an update on the work we've been doing with our strategic plan. But before I do that, I'll just put in a little plug. We're also looking for guest teachers, guest nurses, guest paraeducators. And we have recently adjusted the requirements of those positions a little bit. So if you are interested in doing that work, it's part-time work, you know, please reach out, and we would love, I would love to chat with anyone who might be interested in that, so.
And by guest, you mean substitutes?
Substitute, yes.
Substitutes, looking for substitutes.
Okay, so I have been very fortunate that the last two days I've gone with Bill and Pam Reed and Patricia Agner, and we have done a bit of a roadshow to all of our faculties, really talking about the strategic plan and how we are going to be rolling out our plan, the good work that we've done, that we did last year with our community to build our plan, and what we're really focusing on in year one. And so I'm just going to give you a brief update today of some of that work, but we're excited about it. So as you know, and so the community knows, the strategic plan was really developed last year. It's a pretty hefty document, there's a lot in here, and it's going to guide our work for the next five years. We are very excited for the opportunities to shape our schools into what we want them to be as we move into the future. So there's a lot in there, and we're just getting started with that work. So we spent some time this summer, and I'll talk about that a little bit, but creating three priority teams. The priority teams will focus on outlining and leading the work moving forward. And those priority teams are connected to the three main areas of focus. The first being teaching and learning, which includes our learning systems, assessments, and student agency. The evolution of wellness through inclusive school communities, which includes working with wellness for students, staff, and looking at our infrastructure. And resources for success, which includes staff, equitable resources, and again, our infrastructure. We have built a framework for structured time to ensure that this work is moving forward. Central Office will be meeting weekly for strategic plan check-in. We already had a standing weekly meeting for ESSR work, so as that sun sets, we will continue using that time, but shift the focus to be on the strategic plan. Our administrative cabinet, which meets, meets monthly, will have a standing agenda item for this work. We have those priority teams, which are leadership teams with representatives from all of our schools. Those teams will meet monthly, and then each building has time to work on the priorities through their meeting structures and to ensure that the work of the plan is happening in all of our buildings. And then we plan to report quarterly to the board. It won't necessarily be me, it might be other people working on these teams to keep you all updated on how we're rolling out the strategic plan. I will say that as we went around to the buildings the last two days to do our roadshow, as we called it, we did invite all staff to be a part of those teams if they are interested in working on any of those work groups. And we're hoping that we will have people take us up on that, but we have all of our teacher leaders involved and all of our administrators involved in that work as well. As we outlined our goals for this year, we really focused on what was the urgent work of the strategic plan? Like, what did we have to do first, knowing that this year will be a lot of assessing what we have in place and where we're at, where we might have gaps? And also working to look at what we would naturally be doing this year. You know, for example, with our curriculum work, we would be in our curricular cycle looking at assessments this year, so it made sense to keep assessment as an area of focus. And so as we planned for year one, we did a lot of planning at our admin cabinet retreat and our teacher leader retreats. And our priority teams met and reviewed the goals and strategies of the strategic plan and looked at the year-one work. What strategies are we focusing on? Teams then began to outline measures of success, so how we will know we are meeting those goals. And then as we moved throughout year one, we're also making sure that we're staying very mindful of how we use our resources so that we can be fiscally responsible. It's really important that as we begin our budget cycle, we look at the work of the strategic plan in that. Do you have any questions for me?
No. Bianca, thank you. This is quite an undertaking, of course, as we've talked about a number of times. But thanks for taking it on, and we look forward to the, I think they're somewhat quarterly updates.
Yeah, so we, we do plan.
Yeah, I think we picked three, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
We do plan to also, you know, put some of, you know, the information, we had a conversation today about the roadshow that we did. We might be making some of those resources available on our website for the broader community as well, so people know the work that we're doing. So thank you for the opportunity to update.
Great.
Thank you.
Great. All right, there are, okay, okay. There are no committee reports, any unfinished business? No? Okay, good. All right, we have some new business?
I have something else.
Oh.
So I was just surprised to read in the paper today about the cell phone policy at the high school. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I wish the board had been informed of it prior to. But I also would like to get a copy of the policy and what are the punishments going to be? How is it going to work? From what the paper said, it appeared that one educator or someone was going to be responsible for ensuring the phones were put in lockers. But then Bill told me they can carry them on their person so long as they're not using them. So I'd just like clarification on the policy, and I am concerned that, you know, if the punishment includes them being removed from the classroom for that reason, I think then they're losing valuable education time. So I would just like a copy of that, as well as a copy of Stafford's cell phone policy. I was kind of discussing that we, with Bill, that we as a district should have a district-wide policy. But as he was saying, you know, things are a little different in the elementary schools as opposed to the high school. So I'd just like to, you know, see what the policies are and what the repercussions are going to be. Also, question about their Chromebooks, because, you know, if, even if they're not on their cell phone, they can be using their Chromebooks for non-educational things. So I just wondered how that was going to work, and I think that's going to put, you know, some requirement on the teacher to make sure that they're going around the classroom to see what exactly is going on. And a Chromebook is certainly easier to spot than a cell phone in their lap. I'm not necessarily, as I said, I'm not necessarily opposed to the policy. I'd just like to know more about it. So if we could get copies of that and maybe bring it up again at the September meeting?
Uh, yeah, you want a copy of high school and Stafford?
Stafford, right.
Okay. You want to talk about it? You want, would you like them to give a quick overview?
Sure, that would be great.
That would be.
You want to do it, you could do it, you want to do it now? Looks like he's going to do it now.
Oh, okay.
He's doing it.
Why don't we wait until September when we have?
Yeah, we have the policies.
Yeah, when we have a chance to review it, and, yeah, it's a good idea.
Not saying that we're wrong here.
We've gotten the complaints and.
You never know, it could be wrong.
Curious if any other policy similar carries over to the intermediate and middle school too, since those kids also likely have phones.
Yeah, they do have separate policies.
But different policies.
Right. But if we could get a copy of all of the policies.
Of all of them, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Yep, we can, we can definitely do that.
Great, thank you.
We'll put it on the agenda, yeah. All right, thanks. So the, unfortunately, the other item on our new business is to begin our discussion about how to find our new superintendent. That would begin next summer, July one. So Kathy is not able to be here tonight, but in her place, I'm happy to have us take a look at what we have here, what she supplied in terms of the research that she conducted this summer. We can, we do have the option of voting tonight to move forward with the V S B A consultant, if we'd like to. Or really, the intent of tonight was to take a look at what, the research that she did, look at it, and maybe discuss it more at our September meeting. With just the caveat that, oh, sorry, with just the caveat that we move quickly, there are currently thirteen openings, I think, superintendent openings in the state of Vermont. And so we, if we are going to use the V S B A, we would like to do that and do it quickly. I don't mean do the search quickly, but make that decision as quick as we possibly can so we don't miss out on the opportunity to use them, yes.
I'm just curious, do you know of those thirteen, how many are utilizing the SBA?
I don't think we know that at this time.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, no, it's a great question, yeah.
I think it's thirteen expected, from, from what I understand.
So it's expected they all will utilize that?
I don't know that all, or I don't know if any of them have announced or whatever, but I think they expect thirteen, yeah.
Yeah, okay, Karen?
Bill, what was the, when you applied for the superintendent, what steps did you go through, or what did the board do? And also, other superintendents who have been local, how, did you go through the same process, or how did it work?
Well, when I, when I applied for this job, and I'll tell you that I, I kind of blanked out a lot of it. But I, but I, we were in the, let's see, no, COVID hadn't started. It was just, it was, it was, our previous superintendent had left. Dave Walk had come in and, and had been an interim. And so I think the, I don't, I don't know how the, I don't know anything about how the board decided what their process was, other than I, I applied for the job. But other, other districts around the state recently, I think, have used different, different processes. Like, some, some folks have, some districts have done it. The board has basically run it, they've done a process themselves. As Kathy has described, the V S B A does this as a service, and they, they have this big, long process, and they try to be as comprehensive as possible and very thorough. And I think what they're trying to do is make sure that you do a really strong, clean, transparent process that's basically not, you know, going to find a good candidate and not put the, the board into any bad position of not having done a good process. And so I, and I, I think some other places can bring in bigger consulting firms to, to look for an executive search. That's more expensive. I know Ted Plamanis had, had researched that a little bit as well, and I think the, the costs are, are pretty high.
It was more than three times, I think, what the V S B A is. I think it was close to forty-five, is what Kathy had said, yeah. Charlie, I couldn't think of your name for a minute, I'm so sorry. Thank you. I'm back to work now.
I think, I just want to express that I, I like the idea of the V S B A. I like the idea for many reasons. I don't, when I look around the table, we're not all professional, for lack of a better word, hirers. You know, we're not recruiters. You know, this isn't our full-time gig. And I like the fact that there's somebody who's experienced, that will set the agenda, will kind of walk us pretty much through the whole thing from beginning to end. I mean, we, we're overseers. We're no, we're not, this isn't our job, you know? So I feel like for them to just kind of walk through and say, this is what, this is how it's done, this is what we look for, they're giving us the structure, all of us are obviously involved. I, I feel like it would be a fair, we, we have, we have left no stone unturned. And especially if they were being fair to any candidates that might come forward, that we did our due diligence with a professional person, organization. I, I feel like it's, it's, it makes it clean and, 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 lack of a better word, again, safe, I guess. I feel like we are, we're doing what we have to do and crossing all of our Ts, dotting our Is, crossing our Ts. I just wanted to kind of put my feelings out there about that.
Thank you. Karen?
So I would kind of have the opposite. I mean, it's not that that's a bad way of doing it. However, I've expressed this before, that if we have internal candidates that we know and that have been here, I think it makes more sense in its, like, recognizing their achievements and their, their steps to get to that position, to that level. And I was on the hiring committee for the assistant superintendent, and we had, you know, Pam had, had done that. We had parents, school board, some teachers, some other staff. And I thought, you know, that really was a good way of doing it. You know, I always go back to, we brought somebody from California who we paid a lot of money for, and then we had to pay a lot of money to get rid of them. You know, I think there's. You know, I think there's a huge difference of somebody who may look perfect on paper and nobody knows them from Adam, and you hire them and then you're stuck.
And so may I?
Yep.
And I agree with you 100%. I agree with you. But at the same time too, I think to myself, and I don't want to spend the money if we had internal candidates that were amazing, but I feel like I want to be fair too to the internal candidate that we, if we picked them, I don't want someone else to say, oh, maybe we skipped some steps or we didn't look, we weren't, we're favoring somebody or something like that. And I want to give them every opportunity to rise to the occasion, because if there's somebody internal that we love, we still have the last say. You know what I mean? They're not going to... But I do agree with what you're saying.
But I misspoke in the sense that that was, the position was advertised. We didn't just interview internal candidates. The members of that hiring committee looked at all of the...
Last time you mean?
Yes. For the assistant superintendent.
100%.
For the assistant superintendent you're talking about, okay.
Assistant superintendent. Right. We went through all of the applications and things and, you know, then chose the people who we were going to interview. Meaning, some people backed out, some people you could clearly see they didn't know what job they were even applying for. So that wasn't an option where they just, we closed out anybody else from applying, you know, except internal candidates.
Yeah.
I just think it's a lot of money to spend.
I agree with you.
For...
I do.
I'll let Stephanie go in two, 30, like, two seconds, in that we do have a budget. The board has a budget, so it's not, you know, I'm, yeah.
We're still spending money.
Sure, sure. Stephanie?
A couple of things. One, without going into a complete conversation of what was talked about in the executive session, I believe the document that Kathy provided was not the conversation. How she came to it was not the conversation that we had in the executive session, but that's all I'll say about that at this point. And you all can think about the conversation we had in regards to executive session. Two...
Was I not here?
We can go into the executive session, I can talk about it clearly. But I think it would be helpful to know how we came with, you know, Bill, Adam.
Right.
Was there somebody before Adam?
Dave Rock.
Gary.
Dave was interim.
Mary?
But yeah, Mary was, okay. So like, how did, how did we get to the, like, did we use VSBA for Adam? Did we use it for Bill? Like, we need these, those are questions.
So I was here. So there was a committee of a few people. It wasn't, it wasn't like, that's why I think this is a good idea, because it wasn't run maybe the way it should have been run at that time. I felt like it was a smaller group of people that made decisions at that time. And then the decision was made. It wasn't, it wasn't like a whole collaborative effort. Like, I would like to see with all of us, with this group leading the way anyway, to make sure we do it right. You know, I'm not, I can't speak to the specifics because I wasn't, I wasn't involved in that group, you know, at that time.
So to get Adam, it was only a few people involved?
It wasn't...
If anybody was here at the time, answer that question.
There was a committee. There were, um... There were, I think about 10 of us. There were 8 to 10, mostly faculty, if I remember correctly. There were a couple of board members on the committee.
I think that this...
And then when he left, David came in as interim.
It was so good that people forgot.
I mean, I think after that last discussion...
Oh, sorry.
I mean, at some point, that stuff should, I mean, not...
We don't hold it against you, Bill.
I mean, it should be in some sort of record how we went through this process. I mean, I'm not opposed to having the VSBA, right?
Yeah.
But, I mean, I, I mean, from what Charlene said and just Pam said, you know, we hadn't done that. And why is it all of the sudden, you know, is it because there's so many openings, are all 13 districts jumping on the VSBA bandwagon? And is that in the end going to be beneficial to us, knowing they're doing it for 13 people? Because...
Correct.
I want to add one other thing I forgot, I'm sorry. It was facilitated by an outside person, a previous board member who was in the community who had facilitated.
Courtney?
Bishop, two questions. Do we know the scope of how far they'll be searching? Maybe it said it and I just didn't see it. Is it a nationwide search or is it? I just didn't see it.
I think so, right?
I believe it's nationwide, it was the last one.
Yeah, assuming you would.
And then my only comment is that I don't work for HR, never, no offense to anyone in HR, I just would never want to, so I love the idea of having like an external HR coming in to do all the dotting of the T, of the Is and crossing the Ts, because there is a lot to a hiring process, especially of the scope as big as superintendent.
Yes. Heather, and then Ryan?
I think that a lot of great points are being made all around the table. And one common theme I'm hearing is, in the past, not many people were included in the process and it didn't work out. So I'm not saying I'm opposed to going with the VSBA, but I'm also, great points are brought up, that there's a million schools looking for this position, and that's just Vermont. So if they're going nationwide, they might pull someone from California that nobody knows, that whatever. So the, what I'm hearing is, we all need to have more people involved, not to say not just faculty, but more from the board standpoint, more from the parent standpoint. It needs to be a bigger pool of people looking into all of this. But a great point too, if everyone is looking, who are they going to pull and why? They're looking for everybody, so why are we better than the next town? Or, you know, yes, starting earlier is merit, but why spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to have the same company that's looking for everybody and, you know what I mean? I don't know that there's merit to that.
$12,000 for the...
VSBA.
For the VSBA.
Well, even still, thousands of dollars that we...
I mean, it's an expense, but also...
Loss expense.
Loss expenses, yes.
Are we sure that it's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars in expenses?
We don't know. Either way, it's money that...
I would say, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think that the money that will be spent above the 12 would be money that would be spent regardless, because it's to bring candidates in. We think the 12 is to, you know... Having done a lot of searches, and then I'll turn it back over to you, Bill, for a minute, and then Karen. I ran searches, I was not the HR expert. I relied on HR.
Love HR.
Behind me the entire time, telling, like, keeping us out of liability, keeping us out of harassment and discrimination charges and all sorts of things that can really become very ugly in a search very quickly. And so I like having somebody behind us to do that. That's my, that's my, my big thing. Bill, and then Karen?
I just, I want to clarify what I think VSBA is going to, going to do. They're facilitating a process that you all are going to be involved in, and they're, they're doing the, you know, the legwork. Some of the things that are described in that letter that Kathy put together. So they're doing the, the HR work, basically. But they're not picking candidates, you know, at the expense, you know, they're not going to say, one's going to go to Essex and one's going to go to Burlington and you...
They're not headhunters.
Yeah, they're not headhunters.
They're not headhunters.
So they're facilitating the process. The people who apply to us are going to be the people interested in us. The people who we choose, they might have other options too, but it's, it's not the VSBA's process to pick where they're going to go.
Thanks for that, Bill. Karen?
You had just said that paying for their expenses, do we pay an applicant to come here to interview? Is that what?
That's normally how it works, yeah.
Yeah.
You pay for their...
That's where I learned how to phone interview really quickly in my time as a third committee chair.
I think you lose a lot, definitely, in a phone interview.
Well, I know, I mean, you would, you would learn to eliminate people via the phone interview. And then, and then...
Right, the phone interview is like the first step, and it's easy to, you know what I mean?
But my other question was, are they going to choose the candidates to be interviewed or we do that?
They facilitate, it's my understanding, again, this is Kathy's project. I had nothing to do with it. This is Kathy's project. She just isn't able to be here tonight. So according to what she found out, like, the process is that they are, they are, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe Ted's hand is up. Ted, can you come on up?
Come on down.
Come on down, you know? So...
Yeah, this... This wasn't Kathy's project.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that this summer, as the chair, she did the research. I'm just presenting...
And I thought you were going to be involved.
We can't talk about it because it was an executive session.
Oh, my God. Okay. This was Kathy's initial, to dig in, to get information, to bring to the board. It was not a project.
It never got to...
It's just information that she's brought to the board, so we can all discuss it here. I don't want this to go south, as far as, I don't want...
Rochelle.
I don't want division here.
I thought that it was a group.
We are all going to be part of this process.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say it was Kathy's project, like no one else, but this, just said it never got to the point where, she was still doing the background research, so it never got to the point where you and I would have been invited, like...
I appreciate the fact that she talked to these people, because I don't have time to go out and talk to all these people and come back to the board. So I'm glad she just got us the information. We're discussing it tonight.
Yep.
And Ted, can you please give us some more information about the organization?
So just listening from my vantage point in the back of the room so far, I think there's a tremendous amount of misunderstanding around the table. And I think that's because so far, there hasn't been an opportunity to share some of the information more clearly and in greater detail, as would probably be the case in executive session. But without going into those details, a couple of key points. I first raised my hand when I heard the reference to hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it's not going to be hundreds of thousands.
Sorry I didn't see your hand, Ted.
What?
Sorry I didn't see your hand.
That's okay, you've got other things to do.
I lost my distance glasses.
I wasn't, I wasn't going anywhere and I wasn't in a hurry. And I just, when the right time came up, I just wanted to dispel any concerns that there might be. And, you know, those other recruiting firms, like one that I looked into, because I volunteered to look into it, is a highly regarded firm called Isaacson Miller in Boston. I've used them when I was at Rice University, but they are really expensive and doesn't fit with our budget. But let's just get back to the key points here. First thing is, no project has been done. No project has been completed. No ideas will be excluded. I did work a little bit with Kathy over the summer, simply because, having heard that she was going to attempt to gather some initial information for the benefit of the board's consideration, I said, Kathy, if I can help in any way, I'm glad to do it, because I've been involved in searches before. So we did contact, we reached out and we spoke to VSBA. And the most important point, I think Bill made it already, is that any rule that they would have, if, big if, you choose to explore their services, would be simply as facilitator. So when there are questions like, would it be a national search? Would it be a regional search? Would it be a state search? You, as the board members, will decide that. The facilitator, should you choose to engage a facilitator, won't make any of these decisions. The facilitator will set up a process and say, here's what you need to decide. And I think I heard in an earlier meeting that pretty much unanimously, everybody around the table as board members wants to be involved in the process and the committee. That is a great thing. And everybody can be involved and you will all make the decisions. The facilitator will ask the questions. Think about Beth Silvira. She did not create our strategic vision. She didn't create our strategic plan. She led the group in asking the questions that you should consider from her professional experience. But any facilitator who starts leading you in a certain direction is a facilitator to whom you as board members would say, stop. That's not what we're asking you to do. So the most important point, again, some of us, this is new, and so some anxiousness or uncertainty is very understandable. But keep in mind, the most important point is, you as the board members have the control and you will get to decide. The idea of the facilitator is simply in its name, facilitation. So as an example, I don't remember who it was made the comment, but there are tremendous amounts of logistics that are involved in organizing meetings, circulating materials, drafting materials, revising materials, getting to everybody. And so at one point, I was asking myself the question, I wonder if Sheri Bizarro would have the bandwidth to do that? And the answer's short, no. One of the reasons why we engaged Beth Silvira and Batel to do the work that they did wasn't because we couldn't do it. I mean, I could have done all that facilitation. I've done that many other times. But I didn't have the bandwidth. So this was something that we could outsource to an expert to do on your behalf, and at the end of the day, it was a much better solution, because not only were we able to do other things with our time, but you got somebody who had expertise and objectivity. You didn't have to worry about, is Ted going to lead us in this direction because he's biased, because he doesn't want to spend the money? So having a facilitator has great benefits, and I'm just going to tell you, in the scope of a $64 million budget, if you're sweating $12,000 for the most strategically important decision you will make on this board in your tenure, whether you're three years or six years, there is no other decision you're going to make that will have more impact on this district than who is going to replace Bill. And as the district has experienced, if you make a bad choice, that's really expensive and it makes $12,000 look like nothing.
Max $12,000?
No. $12,000 plus expenses for travel, and that includes travel of the person whom you might select. For example, VSBA has three people whom they currently retain on a regular basis, at least for now. I don't know if they've already been assigned to the other schools. Sooner you get in to ask for one, the sooner you have a choice, by the way, your choice of the three who they might be, if you even go this route. But for example, suppose you pick somebody who's living in Barry. Well, then you'd probably have to pay the IRS mileage rate every time you want that person to come down. I don't know, maybe you rack up a few hundred dollars in those kinds of expenses. But again, I encourage you to think in the overall scheme of things, because this is a case where you need to spend for value. The strategic direction that this district is going to go in will depend entirely, not just upon all these wonderfully committed and talented people, but on who you put in that spot, because it sets the tone for everything. So, you know, great strategic plan, if you get the wrong person, might as well throw it out. You know, great vision, if you get the wrong person, might as well throw it out. So again, think about the responsibility each of you has individually, because if you pick a bad superintendent, you're going to live with it and we're going to live with it. And most importantly, the students will suffer. So you get to decide. Nobody's trying to take that away. And the last thing I'll make, and I truly appreciate your patience, is Kathy's intent, a principle that I try to follow, because misunderstandings can be very easy, especially with complex topics, a principle that I try to follow and I encourage everybody in the business office to follow is, assume good intention. So even if something seems a little off, don't jump to the conclusion that somebody was trying to pull a shenanigan on you. Just say, well, okay, well, maybe they were just trying to help out. Maybe it was a misunderstanding. So I would say in terms of you getting presented with material here, don't jump to the assumption that there was a bad intent to say, here it is, you don't get any input. My understanding, because I had the opportunity to work with Kathy a few times, and you know where's well or better than I do, is she was just trying to do some of the initial legwork to say, here's a possibility, you can consider it, or if you have other ideas, nobody is being precluded from providing their own research and ideas. That's the intent of the discussion starter. It's like when I brought presentations to our labor negotiations, I've said, this is a starting point for conversation. This is not intended as a final solution. Of course, it can be easily misunderstood, so you have to try to be clear. I hope that that helps a little bit, because I think we're all in a good place. I mean, nobody wants to have to do this. Nobody wants to see Bill go. Nobody wants to see Bill go. But it is an opportunity. And depending upon what you decide, and it's your decision, is it a statewide scope? Is it a regional scope? You'll get to decide all of that. And the only thing about having somebody else come in from outside is, that person ostensibly should be equally responsible and responsive to each one of you, okay? Because I don't know Heather any better than I know Ryan, you know, so I'm not going to answer his phone calls twice as often as yours. There will be some objectivity, which, if the process is run right, that's never a concern, but maybe it would provide some reassurance to everybody. I hope that makes some sense and I hope not.
Thank you, Ted.
If you'd like me to be in the executive session to discuss that further, I'm glad to stick around.
Thank you, Ted.
You, you're, you're going to be fine. Don't worry about it. This is just a starter.
Karen?
Would it be possible for a representative or whoever gave Kathy all of this information to come maybe to the September meeting?
I think, I have, I have two things to say on that. Not that I, Ted, you want to stay for a minute, just in case?
Well, I can, depending on the answer you provide, I can also give you some information.
I was going to say, one, time is of the essence, not to, not to rush through it. Of course, it's a very important decision, but time is of the essence. I think the information here represents her conversation with a number of different people, not just one person.
Well, maybe a representative from the organization that we're looking at hiring.
One person's name that I would recommend is, again, if, this is conditional, if you want to think further about VSBA, then I believe the person that you would want to talk to is named Sandra Cameron. Because Sandra Cameron was the person at VSBA who provided a lot of this information. She's very helpful and very knowledgeable. So whether we could get her in person or whether we'd have her zoom in, I think that would be a great idea. And although, and although I agree 100%, I hope you never hear me say more than 100% because I'm a math geek and I hate it more than 100%. 100%, as, as Mary Beth was saying, it, time, to use your exact words, time is of the essence. And, and I don't disagree with that. However, I would say, and I do this all the time, no, no important decision should be rushed. So let's not dilly-dally. The intent was, if you're comfortable, here's some information you can consider maybe in September, but I know if Kathy was here, I'd bet a whole dollar that she was saying, her intent is not to rush this process by you. It's only to say, hey, we'd like to get ahead of the curve, but if you're not comfortable, we don't want to go any faster than anybody around this table wants to go.
Well, and can I add that there are some people that are in this report that I respect, that have knowledge about these things, have been around a long time, and I value their opinion. And if they feel like this is something that we should be looking towards, I'm kind of leaning on people who know to guide us in these directions. So I feel like, you know, I don't know any other recruiters, so how am I going to compare per se? I mean, they're going to come and give us.
The best, the best way typically is by results and referral.
Right.
You're talking to somebody who's had experience.
We don't have time to invite three different recruiters to discuss whether or not we want to go with one or the other.
Well, you could. I mean, you could.
Three of them first?
It would just take you some time.
Yeah.
And that's where you all have to make the balance. Okay, how do I weigh the time versus the benefit? There's no one right answer to that.
Ryan, and then Karen.
Yeah, it's, you know, we're, we're talking with, you know, director of the VSA, you know, somebody from the VSBA, a previous superintendent. These are all people I feel like we can trust or should be trusting at the very least. You know, so I, I feel like, for the accountability that we are beholden to for the community itself and the students, the teachers, the faculty, everybody, you know, it's, we really should have some sort of, somebody leading us through it, who it's their job to do it.
And who is familiar with all the legal requirements, because there are certain legal requirements that have to be met. And if you don't know those, and if you don't meet those, your process just got screwed up.
Yep.
Karen?
Well, my only concern is that, and you, at your opening, said we could either vote tonight or wait until the September meeting. And I would just prefer to wait until the September meeting, see if we can have someone just zoom in even and answer any questions that we may have. I understand time is important, but I think that Bill has given us ample notice that there is time to do this by even still waiting until the September meeting. I mean, we're almost into September, so we're talking a couple of weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
It's probably true based upon what VSBA has shared with us.
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
I said, that's probably true that we have that time. You, you know, you may not be first in line, but you know, I won't be 13th.
Yeah, exactly.
Stephanie?
You may not be able to answer this, and I don't know if anybody in this room, because we're not the ones who had the conversation, but what happens if in the first round of people, we don't find somebody?
There's a lot of different things that can happen.
Right.
One could be you go for a second round. Another could be you fire the VSBA person.
So I mean theoretically, even though we want this, we want a new superintendent by July, or, yeah, July 1st, 2025, we may not like the candidates. So is it just we pay them another $12,000? Or is it $12,000 plus expenses? Like, you know, how long does that 12, is that like?
12, it, it, it.
It's like the base rate?
The $12,000 applies for soup to nuts, the entire process. I mean, it's a legitimate question that you have. Sure, you don't want to turn around and be spending $36,000. I totally get that.
Right, I mean, is it 12 to per year?
Yeah.
Or is it just?
But, but.
Per search, I should say?
But if you're, but, but if you think about it, and there's lots for you to think about, I just want to amplify what Ryan was saying. I mean, you all are your own, you all have to follow your own heart and your own, you know, voice. I will say, and if I were a board member, I would for sure bring in a highly qualified consultant, because when I face my, my constituents in the community, I wouldn't want to have to answer the question, well, I thought I could do it just as well as them, or I didn't need them, or, I would want to be able to say, yes, we brought in the consultant to guide the process, but it was still my decision, which it would be. But that's your choice.
I, I'm sorry. I just have a question about, a lot of people in this room have PTSD from previous, you know, superintendent situations, which I was not here for. So thankfully, I was not on this table for that. How did that person come to be? Like, was there a search through a organization or the VSBA or whatever to find that person? Or did they, like, do we know where?
Yeah, I wish I could answer.
No, Pam had already answered that.
No, you said it was the group, but like, he was in.
It was a slow spring, honestly.
So it was just a local.
They had, I'm only meaning the search, that the person was, it wasn't their job to lead this. It was a former educator, rec, who said, I'll help you through this process, but they didn't have training and.
Well, it's.
They didn't pay their services.
So it was still someone that we paid for services that brought us this, and then it worked out terribly.
I just wanted to point out that it says, they typically take eight to 10 weeks, you know, so let's say we vote in September and we get the ball rolling even end of September, you know, that's end of October, and, you know, before the new year, hopefully we have somebody lined up and.
That's a nice start.
Yeah.
Ready to rock and roll on July 1, you know? And if it doesn't go perfectly, then maybe we enter into January, right? You know?
Well, and to your point and to Stephanie's point, I would say that it would be a very good idea, you know, what do they say? We do this with our plans all the time. Hope for the best, plan for the worst.
Yeah, right.
So do an accelerated schedule that's not so accelerated that makes everybody uncomfortable. Try and get that person landed on board and contracted as soon as you can, with any reason. But don't, but don't rush that process to the point. That way, if some, for some reason, you get surprised late in the game, you still have time. And the other thing is, if the board, because it will be the board, this is your only employee, if the board selects an internal candidate, I think the chances are pretty good that that candidate would likely come for, from another leadership position, which the board would deem as relatively sensitive and important for district operations. And if that happens, then you're going to need to do the next step, which is to do some type of recruitment for that process. In other words, there's a daisy chain. So don't think in terms of just one job. There could be a few jobs that you end up thinking about. So sooner is better than later in that regard.
Charlie?
I just have a question. I know there was a few of you here that are not in agreement. So I just want to kind of get an idea, is it the amount of money? Is it, one, the amount of money that you don't agree with? And let's talk about that, if that's what's bothering you the most. Or is it the organization, the VSBA? Is that what's bothering you, that, that, that organization? You'd rather have a different organization? I'm just curious on those two topics, because really, we're talking about getting someone to just help us facilitate a process. And it's either you don't like the VSBA, and maybe I'm just generalizing.
If you're talking about me, let's be clear, I'm, that's not my issue.
I'm not talking about, you know, I'm talking about, there's a few of you that, I know we've, we've had this discussion for how long now, so I just want to kind of get an idea of what, what is bothering you guys?
I feel like some people are getting really excited and animated, and this is feeling rushed. So I, from my perspective, it's all of the things. I think that we do need to have the information, digest it, marinate it. It's, for me personally, it's, I mean, big picture, $12,000 is not a lot of money if we know it's exactly only $12,000. Not that it'll be hundreds of thousands. But it's another investment on top of turf, on top of this, on top of that, on top of this, when the majority, not the majority, but more than 30% of school budgets didn't pass last year, and who knows what this year is going to be. So all of these things, we have to be wise. And it is not the VSBA in particular, it's putting someone else in charge of, not in charge, I understand, like, we are all making this decision, but it's saying, here's some money, please organize this for us and hope for the best. And I'm not saying just the VSBA, there's other organizations out there that are more expensive, that are maybe less expensive, that are whatever. So that's why my personal position is, let's marinate this, let's figure out all of the information. We meet again in two weeks.
Right, so what are we marinating and talking about in two weeks? I just want to get that clear so we can boil that down to what should we be thinking about?
I just said, for me, it's the investment. It's, are we putting someone else in charge of this when we've done that before and it failed? It's the fact that I, I feel like a lot of people's energy is getting really, like, pushing for this and not necessarily listening. So I feel like, like Ted said, haste makes waste. I understand this is time sensitive, so I'm not saying let's wait months, but I'm, don't feel like it's wise to just vote on something, let's go, let's jump into this tonight.
Big decision.
It's a big decision. And there are not a ton of people not here, but there are board members not present.
Karen?
Well, my concerns are that I don't feel like I've gotten answers as to what their role is. Do we get all of the applicants? Do we get to see them? Do we get to choose who we interview? And I think that there's only one person who can ally, allay some people's fears about what's going to happen, and that would be a representative of the company. And I don't care if they're here in person or they zoom in. I just think it's important, and it's not wasting time to wait until September. We're not waiting months to make a decision, but two weeks. And I think some people need more information. We're spending money and understand, again, it's not a lot of money, but we don't know what the end result is going to be. So I just like my questions answered.
I think another thing that would be very helpful, just my opinion, that is responsive to some of the questions, would be, I would, I would be happy to circle them. I can send it to you and Kathy, Mary Beth, and then you can, I would be happy to circulate a list, a description of the steps in the process that VSBA typically uses because they have a well-worn template. And I think it would be very helpful for almost everybody around the table, a legitimate question, say, what do they do and what do they not do? And if you start to see that list, when I saw it, I found it very thought-provoking because I thought, I'm going to see how we need to do this, and I would be happy to do that.
I think that would be very helpful.
We'll, we'll get that because as you guys have all been saying, this is, this is a lot of information to internalize in a short period of time. A couple of weeks to think about that, to see it, and then if you have questions, I think it's a good use of your time.
Ted, is that what we have here?
Do you have it? I don't know.
We have it, I believe.
Are you sure?
Um, yes.
That, that is showing me?
This is, this is, okay, all right.
She bulleted all the, all the steps.
Did you include all the lists?
Yes, yeah, she did.
Okay, good. I didn't know if that made it.
We, we have that in, in, in the memo.
Right.
I didn't know if all those steps made it.
Yeah, no, she outlined it pretty clearly.
Yeah, it's outlined. It's outlined. Sorry, Ted, we should have made sure you had that. Stephanie?
I just want to say, clarify, my issue isn't the $12,000. My issue is, what we all sat at a meeting in June and agreed on in executive session did not happen. And I think if it did happen the right way, a lot of our questions would be answered. And it is rushed and something we agreed on in executive session, we would talk about it. And we're missing two key players, like, and granted, it's two, so we can still pass, but, you know. It just, executive session wasn't followed here, and that's my bigger issue. The $12,000 and having somebody else lead us is not my issue at all. That's what I have to say.
Bill, were you going to say something else?
I was going to say, to your point, Karen, if you, if she were able to zoom in with us, next board meeting, whenever that is, September, whatever, if that works, we could ask her if she wants to do that. If that didn't work for her schedule-wise, I don't, you're all members, you're all board members, so you can talk to the VSBA, and you could, you could call, call her directly and have that conversation. I mean, this, I think this is the bulleted list that this is what the process is.
It's at least two-thirds of it.
Yeah, yeah. So if there's more questions you have about, you know, what you, what you were saying, Karen, those are valid questions. If you wanted to talk to her to say, you know, exactly how does this work? She'd take that call, I'm pretty sure.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. I mean, I would see if she's available for, for the next meeting, but if she's not, that would be great.
Good. Um, oh, I'm so sorry, Courtney.
I just want to say, like, a process can be perfect and you can still have a bad hire. Like, that can absolutely happen. So I don't think we should question the process just because at one time we had a bad hire.
Yeah.
I think that that's, like, we do, thinking in fear is not the way we should be making decisions.
That would be a valuable experience, though, because we probably all learned something.
Yeah. And we're not really blindly moving forward because we have some people that are respectable people suggesting these people.
Yeah.
That are saying, that's, that's a great reference to say, should we, because we don't know these people.
But the bottom line is, it's you making that decision, not them.
The bottom line, we are going to make the decision based on the facilitator pushing this forward. It's basically having HR on our back to do the work.
Yes.
Because we don't do that stuff.
Yeah.
So as an example, the facilitator will say, we need to agree upon the timeline.